Good evening and welcome to our fourteenth meeting of fiscal year uh two thousand twenty-two. And per the governor's order orders, we're going to do uh an extension of the remote meeting provisions. And have our meeting on Zoom. You can find our agenda with the meeting ID code and the passcode. On the um Town of Milton website on the planning board page. Uh it's also broadcast on cable access and you can um stream it. And you can also go online a few days after our meeting and and watch it that way. Okay, um. We can go around the room and introduce ourselves. I'm Denny Swenson, Chair Rich.
Rich Beiler, Secretary.
Okay, um Kathleen.
Kathleen O'Donnell, Member.
Cheryl.
Cheryl Tagheus, Member.
Good evening. Okay, um our next meeting dates.
Um did you want to have Julia and Allison introduce themselves?
Oh, thank you, Cheryl. I'm so sorry. I was so excited to move through this meeting. Um Allison, Tim can't make it tonight. Um Tim Trawinski, um but Allison.
Allison Quinn, Assistant Town Planner.
Thank you.
I think it's something else, but I'm too lazy to say the whole thing and I forget what it is.
I was, yeah, I think it's more prominent than that, but you're too modest. So I'm gonna have to say it next time. I'll get it straight too. Okay, uh do we have Julie tonight? It's okay if we don't.
He's here.
Oh, you are here. Okay, great. Okay.
And yes, Allison, you're the Assistant Town Planner.
Oh, okay, good, good.
Perfect.
Okay, now that we've got that straight, um we can go on to our administrative items. And um next meeting date, um let's see, we have. Uh December ninth, seven PM, uh we're gonna do four forty Granite Ave. And then December sixteenth, um we have our public hearings. Um and it turns out that the fire station building committee was hoping to give us a. Like a ninety-minute presentation that night, but that's not doable because we have two public hearings that night. Um the following week is Christmas, then the week after that is New Year's. So normally, we would probably. Um well, let's see. Allison, do we know? Can, would the fire station building committee be willing to come to our next meeting on? The last week of December?
I'm happy to reach out to them on that. I think, you know, the direction you're going in makes sense. Where we have a pretty packed agenda for the sixteenth, um it will, I'll connect with them to reschedule.
Okay, yeah, let's see if they can do with the following um meeting, which is two weeks later. And just while we're thinking about it, I don't know if people have their calendar out, but the the la- the. If we, if we go two weeks from December sixteenth to December thirtieth, that's the eve of Christmas Eve. If others wanted to do a Tuesday that week instead of a Thursday. I'm flexible, but it's up to you. I don't, I don't mind doing it Thursday, the thirtieth.
I'm not available that week at all.
Oh, okay. Well, let's see what's, how's your schedule, Kathleen?
Um, it's fine, either one.
Either one, okay.
Do we have to have it that week? Is there, is there a reason?
Um, well, we wouldn't want to have it the week before because it's Christmas week.
No, I understand.
Would you like to push it back to January?
Well, I mean, I can, I'm not away. I'm just off on vacation that week, so I'm around. I can do it, and if we need it, I will be here. I'm just, since uh Cheryl said she wasn't around, my thought was, do we need to have it that week?
Okay, well, I.
I offer a suggestion, Denny.
Yeah.
I saw Tim's email and he had suggested perhaps. Uh they focus at one meeting on the central fire station. I think that's the one that's advancing first in terms of. Uh funding and construction, so the headquarters. So what about our agenda on the ninth? Do we have time to hear the, the central fire station on the ninth and then do the others in January?
That's an interesting idea. Okay, so, so four forty and and partial fire station. That sounds doable if we don't have anything else going on on the ninth. Anything you know of?
Yeah, I'll check it with it to see that if they'll be prepared by the ninth for that presentation. Um it, do you guys want to consider starting a little bit earlier if we're gonna do four forty and? The fire station or do you think seven PM will be all right?
If if it's four forty and the fire station and that's it, I'd like to keep it seven and nine if we could. But um.
Why don't I first check their availability and then we can figure out what the agenda is gonna look like after that?
Okay, let's do that. And then also, if we can do it in pieces. I do like Rich's idea uh of having uh uh the second meeting with them the first week of January. If other, because Cheryl's not gonna be here though, New Year's Eve week. And um I kind of feel like we could all use a break over the holidays, but.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm not gonna be like Kathleen and offer to join.
Sailboat?
Way, no.
No.
Get me vacation, I'm.
Get used to it. Get used to it.
I don't think you need to join from a sailboat. Or any ship of any nature.
I'm already signed up for Bermuda to Boston, um Halifax to St. John's, Newfoundland, um.
Are you gonna be chairing the CPA? Are you gonna be chairing the CPA meetings from the sea?
Apparently.
Well, I can't wait to tell them. That's gonna be fun.
It's a lot of open space.
There you go.
Okay, all right then. Um Julia, could you remind us uh the minutes? I have not had an opportunity to read the last minutes from the twenty-third that you provided today. But what were the meeting minutes? What was the date of the one before that?
The seventeenth.
Okay, I was able.
Twenty-third were sent out yesterday. I'm sorry, they were.
Oh, that's good.
Um but you should have had some in your box yesterday. Um but the seventeenth were sent out um last week or the week before.
Okay, I was able to read the seventeenth and I thought they were fine. Um did anybody else have any thoughts on the? November seventeenth meeting minutes, any amendments or anything?
No, I, I read them both. They were fine.
Okay, um Cheryl.
No, I don't have any comments. I didn't read the twenty-third, though.
I didn't either. So we'll just approve the seventeenth, if that's okay?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of um uh November seventeen.
Thank you.
All in favor? No amendments, right? No, okay, all in favor. Okay, all in favor. Rich Beiler.
Uh, yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell.
Yes.
Cheryl Tagheus.
Yes.
Denny Swenson, yes. Okay, so uh staff update. Um Allison, did you want to do the staff update?
I'm not sure if Tim had anything, you know, intentionally planned for the staff update. Um I can tell you that he he's, you know, still thinking through um. The the glam, um which will probably be part of the the budget discussion. There's been a lot on his plate, so we didn't have a a formal RFP yet. Um he's trying to document specific requirements and deliverables. So that we can talk those through through um once we have a, had a just a larger discussion with with what you want, Denny.
Can you remind me what GLAM stands for?
So I think that's the gross land area, um the count, the land.
Measurement, okay. GLAM, the gross land area measurement, okay.
Um Milton Miller's design guidelines, um Dodson and Flinker, uh they've been pouring over the pile um from previous studies. And existing conditions. Um in addition to reviewing precedent examples of similar guidelines. They're ready to touch base with the board on next steps, which would include a public forum in January. Tim would advise the board to make some time on its December ninth agenda for a brief discussion with the Dodson and Flinker team. Um the the only item that we had on the December ninth was four forty, the deliberations. Um design guideline conversation shouldn't take more than half an hour.
Okay.
And then an update on um planning processes, um bicycle master, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, uh but I'm just thinking three, those three items might be too much on the ninth. I think we could, four forty's been going for a long time and I'm wondering if the. Um if we would have time to do that on the sixteenth, I I'm feeling that might be tight too, but. Um if there's not, I I guess I would ask, can it wait till January? And even if we could, even if we need to schedule another meeting in early January. You know, to kind of, to to discuss that and then set a date for a forum. I realize if they want to set a date for a forum, I mean, if we want to just set a date, that's okay too. I don't know that we, if we can live, limit the discussion to that rather than having a half hour or so that I think Tim suggested. I just feel as if we, you know, four forty is at a point where we need to have the time dedicated to it.
I I would love to just dedicate that whole meeting to plowing through that, um but I um.
I think that that makes sense, ladies.
Given that, can we find out even if the fires, is is there any kind of timing concern that they would have if we waited till January even for the central fire station? Because think about it, four forty has been going on for a long time and, you know, we keep adding other things to agenda and they keep getting. You know, a limited amount, so it's pushing your crystal along. I I kind of feel like before taking up something new, it'd be good to get that finished. Both that and the zoning.
I think that idea.
Yeah, I kind of feel like that too, that um. That's the kind of discussion that we just kind of have to get through and we've been doing it piecemeal.
Right.
Yep.
So why don't I?
A suggestion then about the ninth.
Do you want me to suggest to Tim that we keep Dodson and Flicker, Flinker on for the ninth and put all of the fire station to a January meeting?
I think it'd be good to put all of it in January if we could, except for four forty.
All right, duly noted. I'll let Tim know.
Okay, and I'll be around um to talk. Okay, all right, um. Thank you, Allison. Did you have any more staff update or were those on your?
I think that's about it. It, it, do you want to go over the budget stuff or is I, do you want me to just give you a quick kind of snapshot?
We could do that when we get to the budget discussion if that's okay. Is that, is that we will be fresh there? Okay, thank you. Excellent. All right, so um citizens speak. Um I I just wanted the citizens to know that we have a um scenic road application. Um on Hillside Street that is um being proposed from EverSource. EverSource is doing some work. That's our first agenda item. Then our second, um the board's gonna talk about the fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three budget. And that's our agenda tonight. So if anyone wanted to speak on either of those two topics, I would just wait a moment. Um because we'll be getting to those. Um a- and if if any other citizens wanted to speak about something that's not the scenic road. Hillside, EverSource work discussion with a budget discussion, um citizens can, are welcome to come and speak right now. Do we have any citizens who'd like to speak on a topic other than the EverSource work on Hillside Street? And if people could let me know, I'm on my iPad tonight. I don't see any hands raised. If uh if somebody sees otherwise, please let me know.
I don't.
Okay.
I don't.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so no citizens for citizens speak, but you'll be welcome to s- to speak. Um when we get into the next topic, our public hearing is the scenic road application on Hillside and it involves the EverSource work. Um now, um. I have, well, Allison, did you want to give us any background on that? I know that Tim had reached out to the Mass Historic, I mean, I'm sorry, the Milton Historic Commission, Conservation Commission. And I think the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. Um. And I had heard that the Historic Commission um sussed it out and they, they. I don't know if they formally approved it, but they did not have any objections to it because um they felt that the tree work. Um the trees were not in good shape and they um they should come down for the safety. Um.
That's correct. Um so Tim did reach out to, you know, per um per process, the Conservation Commission, the Historic Commission. And the Shade Tree Advisory. Uh he also had the opportunity to speak with the tree warden Branch Lane. Um he, uh Mr. Lane told him that uh he would be at the hearing, um which is tonight.
I see him in the attendees, great.
Uh but he has indicated that the trees in question appear to be in tough shape. I don't um want to speak for Mr. Lane if he's here, if he, if he wants to speak, but I also don't want to put him on the spot. Um Mr. Lane, do you want to give the board some feedback?
Actually, before that, can I, just um Danny, if I may? And Tim's email said that EverSource was going to give a uh overview presentation. Should we do that first before Mr. Lane comments?
Uh sure. Do we have anyone here from um, oh, um, yeah, do we have anyone here from um? Oh, I see. Is it Chris Gonzalez from EverSource?
Hand going up, yes.
And and Matthew, are you from EverSource? Um Chris Gonzalez, you're ready to speak? You're you're welcome. Oh, hello. Are you muted? Okay, and Matthew.
Can you hear me? This is Chris Gonzalez.
Good evening, Mr. Gonzalez. All right, please tell us.
Thanks for having me.
What, are are, and are you from EverSource?
Yes, I'm the supervisor of vegetation management for EverSource.
Okay, good evening and welcome.
And uh my coworker Matt Mitchell is also with us.
Oh, good evening, Mr. Mitchell.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, thank you for coming. So tell us about what you're thinking.
Do they have the slides that they can screen share or does Allison or do, do you want me to locate them?
I do have a slideshow prepared if I can share my screen. I'm not sure exactly how I do that though on the Zoom call and honestly, a little more accustomed to using Teams.
Oh, that's quite all right. I think we have it up now. Can you see that?
Allison.
Thank you, Allison. Okay. All right. Can, can you see it?
Quick background, um the reasoning uh behind why we were identifying uh trees along this particular stretch of Hillside Ave. Uh we, when I say recently, I'm I'm referring to probably more than two, two to three months ago. Uh we kind of had a a rash of complaints from a couple of different residents along Hillside Ave. Um who were fed by what we term the three six two dash zero five circuit. Uh that electrical circuit feeds uh pretty much down nearly the entire length of Randolph Street. And then makes the, the last little bit actually feeds a small portion of Hillside up to about uh Ford Ranch Road, maybe a little bit beyond Ford Ranch Road. Um and so we were probably gonna be looking at parts of Randolph as well, but we, because the uh complaints were stemming from Hillside itself. We decided to look at Hillside first. And uh so this is the list of trees that uh my coworker Matt came up with. After doing a pretty in-depth uh, you know, visual assessment of the uh the overall health. And uh this is what he determined would be probably the best take out of there to um uh maintain the electrical reliability and the safety of uh public safety in general.
Okay.
So um I can go through the trees one by one if that's what everybody would like.
Sure.
You know, I'll be brief. Um so tree number one, uh that's a white ash. Uh we uh were specifically looking for white ash often. Because it tends to be a a problem tree in the sense that um the population of white ash uh over the last, you know, ten years to twenty years. Has been um slowly declining due to a couple of different afflictions that they've been getting. Um general ash decline is one of the names or ash yellows. Uh more recently, uh we have the Emerald Ash Bore, which is an insect that's moving its way east. Uh and it's not something that I have identified yet in Milton, and these particular trees have not been affected by Emerald Ash Bore yet, but it's kind of an inevitability. Um and so uh these trees were in poor shape as it is and uh assuming that the Emerald Ash Bore, which does target. A healthy trees and trees that are in decline, um I thought that these trees would be best to get out of there while we have the chance.
Okay.
Alright, so that would be tree number one, and I believe tree number two is also in uh in Ash Tree.
Okay.
Uh so I guess we can move on to tree number three now. So this particular tree, the Norway Maple, uh the tree is not in great health, but it's not something that typically we would identify for removal. Except that this one is in extremely close proximity to uh our high voltage electric wires and uh the equipment that are on that pole. Um and for that reason, this is why we're asking to take the tree out for safety reasons and because uh, you know, the, also Norway maples are considered to be an invasive tree. So people are usually a little more agreeable with us taking those out of there because uh it's something that uh is generally not considered to be a tree that you want. So that one is uh another shot of the, the Norway Maple. Um the little red circle there is kind of highlighting an area in the crown of a tree where it's had some previous storm damage issues of uh branches breaking out. So tree number four, this is also a white ash and I explained earlier why we're identifying white ash in general. This one uh is in similar situation to the other two trees that we had highlighted. Um, this one is also a little bigger. Um, I believe this one is also showing rod at the base and a shedding bark, which I think should be shown in the next picture. Uh, tree number five is a sugar maple. Um, this is one. I believe uh, this is not a tree that we're actually asking, asking to remove completely. Uh, I don't know that this necessarily needed to go to the hearing, through the hearing process. We're looking to take one of the leaders out that's in close proximity to the wires, not the entire tree. Uh, so tree number six, this is another sugar maple. Um, this one unfortunately looks like it's kind of been a victim of uh, over pruning over the years. It looks like originally it was growing directly underneath our wires. Uh, with our pruning, you know, our ultimate goal is to try and get the tree to grow around the wires. Uh, in this particular case, it looks like uh, slow can be a little bit tough with sugar maples because of their growth form, and uh, this one looks to be in pretty serious decline. So trees number seven and eight, these are probably the ones that I see is the biggest uh, chance of falling and causing in a power outage or uh, it causing issues for public safety. These are both white ash as well. These believe, uh, I believe are both already dead. Um, one of the trees uh was previously actually in contact with one of the high voltage wires and actually has a little burn mark on the trunk.
Yeah, these guys are totally dead.
So as you can see in that picture there, there was the uh, we circled the part where the uh, the bird mark was on the trunk.
Okay.
And tree number nine is in that same vicinity as the other two trees. It's just set back from the road a little bit, and uh, that's another white ash. This one's also completely dead. Is that correct? Yeah.
Yeah, that one's dead as well.
And I believe that's everything.
Okay, well, thank you for your presentation. Um, I noticed that um, Branch had his hand up, so I'm interested to hear from Branch as well. Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Lane. How are you tonight?
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. It's all working.
Oh, good. Um, yeah, I, I, I totally agree with Christopher and Matthew's evaluations out there on Hillside Street. I think he, he explained it quite thoroughly and, and essentially virtually all those trees are in the process of dying or dead. The one thing I would ask Matthew at one twenty, uh, Hillside, as they say, I've been out to the site and, and looked at these trees. That cluster of ash trees out, out there, could you talk with the, the homeowner while you're uh, out there doing this work? Because I think there might be some additional dead ash behind the three that um, you had, you have discussed in your plan. Does that sound like something that might be occurring?
Matthew.
Yeah, I, I talked to the uh, the, um, both to let him know about the, the town trees and to just some uh, trees removed off of his property. Um, and he pointed out the trees um, that you're talking about and while they are um, uh, not looking very well. Um, I did not originally write them up since uh, uh, probability wise, they would probably, if they were to fail, uh, not fall onto the wires, and that's usually how I have to justify things.
Okay, well, those trees are fairly close. Could you reevaluate them and discuss it with the homeowner because, you know, the, they're all in that small cluster there. So if there are two additional dead ones or whatever it is beside the uh, the other three ash, then it would be uh greatly appreciated if you'd work with the homeowner and take those out too.
I'm, I'm definitely happy to take a look at them. Um, from what I can tell, they were uh, town trees, uh, so we definitely need uh, everybody's approval on that.
I can hardly hear you. Is that on my end or yours?
Uh, can you hear now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, um, from what I can tell, those trees were, were on the uh, the town uh, road layout. Um, so if we wanted to remove those, um, we'd need uh, the town approval as well.
Yeah, if, if they're dead, as they say, that, that would make sense, especially because EverSource is such a kind organization.
Uh, we, we do our best.
Yeah, for sure. But anyway, those are my comments. I think um, you know, Christopher hit and uh, Matthew hit it on the mark. And I had one, one other question. Um, I have um, I have Matthew's phone number. I wanted to talk to Chris. I wanted to talk to you about another issue uh, with EverSource. Can you give me your phone number?
Yeah, certainly.
Okay.
You want it right now?
Yes.
Well, I don't know if we want to broadcast it. Do you want to give it to him through Matthew? He can, Branch, do you mind calling Matthew maybe tomorrow and getting it? I just don't want to put it over.
Yeah, that's fine.
Not that many people watch.
Who should I get it from?
From, if you have Matthew's number, do, do you mind calling Matthew?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, that'd be fine. I can get it. I can get it from Matthew. That'll work.
Okay, I just.
For, for Branch, I can, um, I can, I can ask Tom McCarthy with the DPW to get my, get you my number as well.
Who's that?
This is Chris Gonzalez. I can get you, I can ask Tom McCarthy to pass my number along to you, uh, Assistant DPW Director. Does that work?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that will be fine. Or Chase, either one.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Well, in any event, those are my comments for the day.
Well, that's wonderful. Thank you so much for, for taking a look at those trees and letting us know. Um, I will open this up to uh, discussion with the rest of the board, but I didn't know if there was anyone from the public who wanted to talk to us as we begin our discussion. Okay, I see Carol. Uh, Carol, would you like to join us tonight? Okay, Carol's no longer raising her hand. Oh, hello. Good evening. Hi, Carol.
Hi, uh, just a couple of observations. Um, I've looked at this.
Carol, do you mind giving us, do you mind giving us your name and street address just for our meeting minutes? Thank you.
I'm Carol Stoker, S T O C K E R. I live at two nine one Hillside Street. Um, I'm Vice President of the Hillside Neighborhood Association and I'm a member of the Shade Tree Advisory Committee, and I also looked at the site. One thing is that they are not dealing with the most, the tree that's the most dangerous one on Hillside Street as a threat to the wires, and I'm wondering why that is. And that is a dead leaning hemlock at two thirty-seven Hillside Street that is just leaning against another tree and it is a threat to life and limb and to the wires. It is totally dead, and I'm just asking, um, why is that not part of the discussion?
Uh, I think that I know which tree you're talking about, and I believe the DPW already asked me to help out with that one. And uh, their uh, rationing was, uh, rationale was that the, uh, since the hemlock tree was coming down from private property, it wasn't something that they can handle. So the hemlock itself was not something that I really assessed as a threat to the EverSource wires because they're kind of across the street. But the thing is, the tree is hung up in, like you said, a dead elm tree. And so we would need to take out that dead elm tree, which I believe is on public property, and that is something the DPW has asked for our help with. So that's something that we plan on doing.
Okay, so you're gonna take out the dead elm tree at some point and probably the dead hem, hemlock too.
Well, yeah, well, the, the hemlock is hung up in the elm, so yeah, we would have to take them both down at the same time.
I think if you took the, the, the elm tree out, the hemlock would come crashing down with, with, under any circumstances.
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna deal with that and, and do you know how soon?
Yeah, it should have been done already, frankly. Um, but yes, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a tree crew out there and carry that before the end of the year, most definitely.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Um, second question. Um, evaluating the trees, I really do agree with you with, with, um, ex, with one exception, which is the tree number five, the sugar maple. Um, no, excuse me, it's not tree number five, the sugar maple, it's tree numbers, um, three, the Norway maple, which is um, opposite, tree number three, the Norway maple. Um, is, is a hell, i- it's not um, dying or dead. It's a healthy tree, except that it's very close to the wires. So is that a reason enough to take it out, that it's very close to the wires?
Well, that's correct. I mean, that is the main reason why we identified that tree for, for removal was because it is in close proximity to the wires and because uh, like Matt noted on the uh, the slide here, it's passing former storm damage. Um, so it is a tree that we've had some problems with in the past, but uh, um, vigor wise, the tree is fine. It's just structurally uh, unsound.
Yeah, even um, even uh, very healthy trees can fail. So when a tree is that close to the wires, the probability of any sort of failure impacting the wires is basically a hundred percent. That plus the uh, there's already existing storm damage. Normally when trees fail once, um, they're might, they're more likely to do so again, even if they're biologically healthy. So even though it does have a full canopy, um, there are, there are still some, uh, some issues with it from that angle.
Well, now, this is an interesting point because, and this is just an irony or a coincidence, but this tree is standing next to the Copeland Field and the Copeland Foundation just gave the Street Tree uh, Advisory Committee fifty thousand dollars to plant new trees. And um, maybe we shouldn't be planting them anywhere near electric wires if you're just gonna have to cut them down. Because we're deciding where to plant those trees now and I have to report back to the Street Tree Committee. So maybe we should be having a conversation about that instead of spending five hundred dollars a tree to plant trees in places where you're gonna come back thirty years later and say, that's a perfectly healthy tree, but we don't like the location, so we're gonna cut it down. Um, it, you not want trees anywhere near the wires?
Well, we, we've actually come up with a list that we call the thirty under thirty, and what that is, is a list of thirty tree species that mature at under thirty feet tall, which we do recommend, uh, if you are gonna be planting anything underneath the wires or in the vicinity of the wires. Um, those are the species that we recommend putting underneath. Um, you know, uh, tall growing species, it's inevitable if you're gonna plant a species like a red oak or, you know, uh, or an American elm that at maturity wants to be eighty feet tall. You know, there, it's, there's gonna be conflict at some point if you're planting it directly underneath our wires. So yeah, you know, we, right tree, right place is kind of uh, what we tell people and um, you know, if the wrong tree is there, you know, we're gonna have to maintain it if it gets close to our wires.
So how would we get this thirty under thirty list to the uh, Street Tree Advisory Committee as they're buying trees?
Well, uh, is, is Lane, Lane or, or Branch, I'm sorry. Branch, are you a, a member of the committee as well?
I'm an ex-officio member.
Oh, wonderful. Well, if uh, I, I'd be happy to get together with the group at some point. Um, we actually did like, I could email you a copy of the poster that we created, or I could give you physical copies of the poster. Uh, either way, you know, it's something that we're trying to promote, so I'd be happy to uh, to work with you guys on that.
So in other words, you could give it to Branch and Branch can um, um, deliver it or send it to the uh, next stack meeting.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay, so and um, or, or, or if Branch, if you're not, the next stack meeting is um, December fourteen. If you can't attend, just email it to me and I'll bring it.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Oh, great. Okay, that would be very, that would be very useful. Um, another question um, for, on this subject. Do um, Christian or Matt have any advice on how close to plant these shorter trees? In other words, there's two things you can do, and one is plant shortest specimens that don't grow as tall, and the other is plant them further back from the road. Do you want them further back from the wires? Or is it okay with you to plant shorter trees directly under the wires?
Uh, we're, we're fine with planting shorter trees directly underneath the wires, you know, as long as it's something that's not gonna mature uh, at a, at a tall height, you know. So we recommend trees that were gonna mature at under thirty feet tall, like, you know, uh, Japanese maples and various species of dogwoods, crab apples, uh, a lot of different cherry trees, ornamental cherry trees are perfectly adequate for that purpose.
Okay, and then, and, and thirty feet, that's, that's the height, right? That's the cutoff.
Yeah, you know, that's, I'd say it's a, it's a guideline. You know, there's, there's certain areas where that still can be an issue with some of our wires. Um, you know, we try and keep the high voltage wires as far from the ground as possible. You know, but below that, you're gonna see lesser voltage wires, we call it secondary voltage, and there's gonna be a lot of telecommunication wires as well, like cable, telephone. You know, we don't prune trees around those wires. Um, because we don't own them and there's no electricity, or at least very, very little electricity going through them, so it's not a safety issue. Uh, but there's still always a chance that, you know, Comcast or somebody like that is gonna prune trees and it's very rare that it happens, but you know, we typically but blame for it when it does happen. So I have had to look at a few different areas where they've uh, cut some trees that are well below our wires, you know, the, uh, usually for when they're in, installing their own new, new wire with their own.
So is thirty feet safe or maybe it should be shorter than that?
I think thirty feet is safe.
Okay, and if we wanted to invite, if we wanted to get ahold of you to in, in, invite you to come to a stack meeting, how would we do that? Contact you outside of this meeting?
I can give you my email right now.
Well, then they don't like you to do it over the Zoom.
You can get it from Branch.
I, 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 I'd rather not give my, my cell phone number out, but I have no problem giving out my email.
Okay, go ahead.
So uh, it's uh, my first name, Christopher, spelled like Christopher's usually spelled. Doc, and then my last name is Gonzalez. U N Z A L E Z at eversource.com.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Um.
Chris, hey, Christopher.
Yeah.
Yep.
Christopher, I have a, a comment. Could you, could you send me out the uh, so that I could pass it along to that committee? Your uh, your typical um, uh, drawing or, or plan that shows the uh, the uh, zone below, beside, above trees, that, you know, that typ, that typical plan that you have.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, to show, to show your area of control.
Yep. I'll get that over to you, Branch.
And that way I can, I can give it to the committee and it's sort of explanatory about what the area is that you're uh, trying to protect.
Well, thank you, Branch, and thank you, Carol. And before I forget.
One last comment, which is, excuse me, um, one of the um, residents of Hillside Street asked me to ask Christian and Matt, um, can you contribute to the uh, tree planting fund, which is uh, that, that the town has to uh, for the uh, cost of replanting the uh, these trees to replace the eight trees you're taking down?
Uh, we, we can't contribute a monetary, uh, we really can't make a monetary contribution, but um, this is something that Branch and I spoke about years ago was the donating actual trees or planting the trees for you guys, which is something that I can do.
Oh, you could do that.
I would, I would, I would hesitate, I would hesitate doing a one for one replanting just because, like I said, you know, the reason we're targeting these trees is because, you know, they have defects which make them public safety issues, which, you know, so in our eyes, we are kind of, you know, providing a benefit to the town. But uh, but yeah, we, we do for tree plantings for, you know, uh, different municipalities in the Boston area, so um, I'd be happy to help you guys out.
With, with plant, with planting trees?
Yeah.
Oh, and, and we provide the trees and you plant them? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we would provide the trees and we could plant them for you. You would just have to make sure they get watered.
Oh, okay, and they would be under thirty feet and under wires, right?
Well, depending on where you want.
Not necessarily. I'll, Carol, I'll follow up with Christopher on that issue.
Thank you, Branch.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Carol, and thank you, Branch. And I just wanted to do a twenty-three B three disclosure because I am on the Garden Club and I believe Carol is, Carol Stoker is also on the Milton Garden Club. But I pursuant to guidance from the State Ethics Commission, I, I believe I can be fair and objective and carrying out my official duties on this topic. Um. Um, um, okay, so, thank you. Yes?
Yeah, can I do that too?
Oh, yes, please do.
Forget it, yeah, oh, and um, hold on one second, sorry, I wrote it down here. So yeah, uh, so I've never done one either before, but I'll, I'll do a twenty-three B three disclosure as as well. I do not work with EverSource on this subject, but um I am, my company is a consultant for EverSource and energy efficiency, so. But it doesn't relate to this issue, so I feel like I could be fair and objective and carrying out my official duties as well.
Okay, always good to be transparent, right? Okay, um, it did, with the, anyone else from the public uh like to comment on this topic? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised, please let me know if anybody else is seeing any hands. Um, all right, then let's talk as a board about this. You know, I, I, I very much appreciate Branch Lane and um. Our, our tree warden and Carol Stalker from the Shade Tree Committee and uh. The Vice President of the Neighborhood Association of Hillside. Um, I very much appreciate all the uh homework they did on this and all the information they provided. I'd be very excited if EverSource could um replenish some of these trees in some fashion, I think that's wonderful discussion to overhear. Um, I, it, it's my belief that it sounds like these trees are a good thing to remove for safety. Um, and with our global warming, the way that it is, our storms are only going to get harsher. And I live in a neighborhood where we have our power go out frequently because of trees on wires. So I really appreciate EverSource being proactive and also responsive to the community. Um, but let's hear from others. Did other planning board members want to chime in?
Yeah, I, I, I um, I think it makes sense to have these trees removed. Um, and the pruning that that's being um also suggested or or um. Recommended, so um, I have no problems with the request.
Wonderful. Uh, Kathleen?
Yeah, I think of the information that they provided on those trees was perfect and um. I think uh, you know, it was very obviously useful to get the input from Branch Lane. And um, I don't have any issues with the request.
Rich Beeler?
Uh, nope, nothing to add, I, I don't have any problem with the request either.
Okay, good, well, I, I don't know that as a planning board, we can require that they um replenish. Uh, trees in some form or fashion, but I greatly appreciate that they offered, and on the honor code. I, I hope they do uh work something out with um Branch, Lane and Carol Stalker. Uh, with the Shade Tree Committee um and our DPW department, because. Um, this is, these are a lot of trees coming down, and um the Shade Tree Committee has been working. Trying to replace something like five hundred trees. Um, so, um, it, it, it matters when eight trees die or have to be removed for safety reasons, so. Um, thank you very much for your efforts in that area. Um, so I, do we need to do a vote of approval on this?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, any last um comments or feedback? All right, okay, I'm not seeing any hands from the public either, so I'm ready for motion.
I would make a motion to approve the application for the removal of and pruning of trees um as submitted for Hillside. This Hillside Road or Ave, I'm sorry, I forget. For Hillside Street.
Hillside Street, okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, uh, Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Uh, Cheryl's guys?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Any Swenson, yes, okay, thank you, good. Wow, got our first topic done, and it's Tim and Cindy, okay, our second topic is um the budget.
So Tim, Tim and I have been dealing with this budget, and this is not a critique, it's just a, a change of. The way the new Director of Finance wants to handle uh the, the budget for the town of Milton. So I'm gonna read, um, I'm not sure if everyone had the opportunity to, to review Tim's emails, one of them was a little bit lengthy. But um, as Tim mentioned last meeting. The Town's Director of Finance has advised the Planning Board to make requests for an appropriation for plans and studies. Through the capital budget, and I'll explain a little bit more about that in a second. This will allow the board to deploy funds over multiple fiscal years compared to the operating budget, our typical procedure. Which requires funds to be spent in the fiscal year they're appropriated for. To this end, the board needs to have a specific proposal or proposals for the capital committee to evaluate. If the board can come up with an idea, uh, Allison and I, no, I'm sorry, uh, me and Tim can spec out. A general dollar figure, um, and then we, we put a little bit more on this, because we, we had some outstanding items from. FY twenty-two and twenty-one that we've been looking for clarity on, so the FY twenty-two budget. We've discussed this previously, but to refresh everyone's memory, the design guidelines and GLAM projects were both intended. To be FY twenty-one projects, because of the turnover in the finance office. And the approach toward operating versus capital budgeting of the new Director of Finance. We were not able to get a contract for either of those projects done in FY twenty-one. The consequences between the design guidelines contract and the Dodson and Flinker and the anticipated expense of the GLAM. The board's FY twenty-two budget is mostly spent. I've been, I've had a number of, well, Tim has had a number of conversations with the Director of Finance on this issue. And the possibility of recouping the board's unspent FY twenty-one budget. The best advice she has been able to give me is that the board should propose a project that can be contracted. And completed by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, which would be the, the end of the fiscal year. That Tim can bring to her and the town administrator, um, there's no other formal procedure for this kind of mechanism.
Right, so I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
There's always more requests for the Capital Improvement Committee, far more requests than money is available. Does this put planning in competition with all of the other requests? Where we would be losing our line item opportunities to potentially other requests? I, I, I mentioned this at our Master Plan Implementation Committee, any discussion as well, because as you all may recall. Um, the funds that were allocated for uh the M-PIC. Um, have to be approved both by the Select Board and the Planning Board. And so there's thirty thousand dollars in M-PIC and fifty thousand dollars in Planning Board, and we've been using those. Except for this, um, a- as Alison explained, this sort of been, been difficult tracking with. That um initially with staff changeover in the planning department and then in the finance department, but. And I would really hate to have us have to be competing uh for planning work, and so. Is that anything that uh you can comment on, Alison, from your conversations?
Michelle, I share that, I think it's a very legitimate concern, it, it was something that I had initially been trying to understand. An operating budget is, is typically what, what gets voted on and approved, and. Because the way that our former uh Director of Finance used to. Allow us to carry, so I would, what, what happened was when, when Bill left, we hadn't closed out the fiscal year. So I was able to just take whatever money we had, create. Uh, you know, create kind of like its own purchase order and then dump it into the next fiscal year, so we were able to carry it over. Our current Director of Finance does not like to have state reporting done in that way.
No, really?
For reasons. So I, I guess what we, what needs to, to be done here is that we need to just pay more attention. To making sure that we're being like short term, long term budget, so if we know that we're gonna have something. That we're gonna spend within the year, that can be part of our operating budget. Um, if we know it could potentially cross years, it has to be a capital um budget item. And I, I do think that we'll get it. Um, because we've, we've already lost some money and that's out there in free cash, and we can go plead the case to get it back if we need it.
It's um, sorry, is Meredith our representative to the Capital Improvement Committee?
Yeah.
I would love to speak to Meredith about this offline, because I, it's just, we fought hard for these monies for planning in prior years. And now we've had them, and it's hard to get them back once you lose them, you know, because there's competition for the funds. And, you know, I have, when I've been asked about it in the past. Now, when I was in Denny's chair, the chair there, and we've been talking about budgets, I say, you know, it's an investment in planning that could yield. You know, uh, revenue for the town far more than was spent, so it's, you know, it needs to be thought of uh as. Something that's not, you know, that can be cut at the last minute when there's a gap in the budget, and I've advocated for that. Um, and I hope that we all are on the same page about wanting to continue to advocate for the planning dollars, so that's my pitch.
No, I, I get that, Cheryl, I, have you guys ever had to go before the capital?
Um, no, no.
Well, I'm kind of wondering why, well, I mean, how, how many contracts do we have that go on for more than a year?
Our problem, Kathleen has been, sorry, Alison, our problem has been, Kathleen, that some of the contracts. We kind of get to late, too late in the year, that's why I keep asking about spending our monies, because I don't wanna lose them. And we're at that stage again, it, you know, you kind of get to the end of the, the, the budget gets approved in May, you can't spend them until July. But then all of a sudden, you get to a point where, you know, it creeps up on you, and so. That's been our problem, it takes time to get the RFP or the scope for services and then get, then you actually do the work. It's like a six month process, depending upon the work, we have to really be better, I think this is what Alison was saying, better organized. At the beginning and be ready to do it, some of what we've.
Well, you can do an RFP, you know, when the budget got voted and just have it be contingent upon the beginning of the fiscal year, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, sometimes we haven't voted on what the projects are gonna be, you know, right away.
Yeah.
We've said that here's where they could be, you know, it might be this or that, like we said. It's actually, we said last year, it would be design guidelines if the zoning passed, right, from Milton Village, so we did say that. And we've said other planning in East Milton, so we use that for the Judy Barrett work, you know, so we've done the things that we've said. It's just the ti- look at COVID impacted Judy Barrett's work, right, so that took a lot longer. You know, that's part of the challenge too, because you have public engagement, you know, those can, that can take time.
Yeah, all right, well, I, in, 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 in the way Alison is describing this, I do feel like. We could get the GLAM project done be- before the fiscal year is out.
Um, yes, I, I think that that's very achievable.
Okay, so, so that would be on this spring, we, we, let's call that this spring, and then um. Do we already have the Dodson Flinker? That's this winter, and we'll, we'll be done with that by the next fiscal year, right? By.
Right, so, so we're in contract with them right now, they've already gone through all the data, and they're planning out the first community engaged in January. So I, I'm assuming that we'll be in good shape to close them out by the end of the fiscal year.
So the two things that I can think of, that we've talked about. Is related to um East Milton and zoning work, and I think um following up on the Barrett report. Um, so I would like, uh, for us, I, we could also um think about like we had with Milton Village or MAPC. Um, we could apply for a grant because um we were awarded that grant there, and there was a time where. Uh, we had to wait until that zoning passed before we would be eligible again, but in any case. I think we, it probably would be additional in East Milton, because it's a, has more diversity in the kinds of. What's there and what the issues are than Milton Village had, you know, like whether there be an expansion of the district, or there multiple, are there sub-districts within the district? Or what have you, so, and then the other thing is um something that. We, the M-PIC has helped the planning department with a bit, and but, and there's a grant for some of the work. To do some planning work in what some have called Upper Mills or West Milton. But, you know.
That's Tim, that's Tim calls it Upper Mills.
But it's a part of town, that decrepit um building by the food mart. And we know the zoning that we passed there can't work, because the other property sold, and you can't combine the two lots any longer. And then there's a town-owned parcel there that might be suitable for some mix of uses, including open space uses. But um I, I'd say that if we were going to, those are the things I can think of offhand, and Alison or others may have ideas. But um, those have been talked about.
I, I don't know if we've talked about this as a board, I, we, we may have, but I, I think something that would help. East Milton, the East Milton discussion would be design guidelines. And um the traffic um management planning and.
You know what, um, what we could ask Tim for, you know, Denny, is an update on that um traffic model. That was being done for East Milton, and because what we were, you may recall that that initiated out of the Master Plan Implementation. Committee, then went over to the Traffic Mitigation Committee, um, and there was fun, you know, a fair amount of funding put in place, but it was the. We only did half of the funding, and we said we were gonna start with East Milton, and then we were going to expand that traffic model. Um, and there, you can go back, and this was when Bill Clark was uh still. Um, you know, employed in town, and so, uh, but I do have copies of those proposals and what they intended for it to be, but I know that. Tim has been in conversations with um Jeff Mc- McSitemas, I think his last name is, at Beta about that work. So maybe we, we could get an update on that.
Yeah, I just, I, I feel like in East Milton, um. It, I think an overlay discussion is an, is an interesting. And an important thing to have, because we don't want. We don't want projects out of scope of, of what we're intending as a town. Um, to just keep cropping up piecemeal, it would be much better to have a plan. Um, and a path. But I feel like. If we could have some ground rules and some guidelines, um, some design guidelines. Almost at the beginning of the discussion, um, I think it, it would help. I think it would help the process, um, and then I also think that, that parking almost, it almost kind of has to be at the front of the process. The parking and the um loading dock issue and all of that really needs to be kind of.
Yeah, so one thing I would say to some of that is, we have, they have, Beta has looked at and provided some reports on that. We have like half a dozen probably reports of this nature, and some of that was funded through that Master Plan Fund. So maybe what we need is to invite Jeff in from Beta and kind of review all of what they've done, and that would be a good refresher. For the board as well as members of the public, you know, because there might be some recommendations that were in those reports that haven't been followed up on.
Interesting, okay, yeah, so that would be, that, that, I'm talking about very focused on the parking and then traffic on.
And, and loading zones, that's what they are, that's, that's what it is, and.
Okay.
So I think just, it's been some time since those have, uh, well, I mean, probably the most recent one was. Um, right before the uh change in personnel of, you know, from Bill Clark to Tim, but uh. So, and I know Tim referenced it in, when talking about four forty Granite Avenue, but. Um, there's been a fair amount of work done, and maybe not everyone's aware of, and I think the first place to start with that would be to review what's been done. Refresh everyone's memories, yeah.
I think that's a great idea, and I, I think um. Yeah, I, I, I think Judy Barrett touched upon that in her report, um, and I think I, I spoke with some participants of the Barrett. Project, and in order to get through their project, they almost had to assume that, just imagine parking has been solved. Just imagine loading just, loading zone issues have been solved, in order to even begin to have a. In order to even begin to have a discussion, they, they needed to sort of set that aside, but we don't have that luxury of just setting it aside. We kinda have to really tackle it, in my opinion. Um, so, um, I, um, I think some East Milton overlay, study money or MAPC or grants or something like that. I, I don't want it to be closed to MAPC. I would love to see what MAPC might like to offer us, but if Allison wouldn't mind kind of thinking about anyone else like that or, um, any other way to approach it, through, you know, I don't know if we should be getting money from, from the capital, from the capital, uh, committee, or if we should be looking into grants, but maybe a combination of the two. And then, um,
I'm gonna just make one suggestion with that. Can Allison follow up with Judy Barrett too and see? Because I didn't necessarily like the idea of overlay. There was, I think in their recommendation was a change in zoning, but you know, maybe, uh, she can have a recommendation of, um, you know, if it's not MAPC and grant money that we're looking for there, you know, who might be the right kind of consultant to, to draft the zoning?
Cheryl, one of the other things, I'm sorry, I, I just wanted to quickly remind you that Judy Barrett had mentioned was the potential of a 40R. Because there are just additional, you know, state funding that comes with that kinda zoning.
I've been talking about 40Rs since I worked on the regulations.
Yeah, that, that, they're, they're kind of a really good option for Milton because they just-
I don't understand why we haven't done anything with it, but.
So maybe what we should do, remember we had the gentleman from DHC come into a meeting and talk about 40Rs?
Bill Ryan? I could tell you, I could tell you anything that you need to know.
That was probably before you were on the board. So maybe we have time on an agenda also, Denny, for Kathleen to review 40Rs with us. And, you know, um, and the Beta, you know, just kind of to set and re, sort of re-review the Barrett report and the recommendations there, kind of to preface on what we think the good next steps might be, right?
Yeah, I think, Jenny, why don't I have, I'll, I'll connect with him tomorrow? And we'll get together, everything that's been done in East Milton, and then you and Tim can kinda decide which direction you want us to kinda tee up for you, um, for feedback. You know, as Cheryl suggested, for, you know, as a review.
Okay, that's a great idea. Thank you. And I also, in that hodgepodge of questions for Tim, the micro zoning that Cheryl mentioned, um, the neighborhood had mentioned that in relation, when they came in and talked to us about 440 Granite Avenue. So I, I think that the neighborhood might have some ideas on that micro zoning. And that, that does sound interesting. Um, so-
The sub-districts within the district, is that what you meant?
Right, yeah, what's micro zoning?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I don't know, I mean, the sub-districts were, because you don't, you wouldn't necessarily have the same, um, dimensional requirements or uses allowed everywhere throughout, right? There could be transition zones.
Transition zones, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, um, yeah, um, okay. Well, that's good. All good stuff. Okay, so, um, see, do you need anything from us, Allison? I think we are all still very interested in GLAM, Dodson, Flinker.
We didn't, I mentioned the West Milton. And I know that's something that Tim was very interested in because, um, it's a part of town that hasn't received any planning. So is there support on the board for thinking about that as well? I support that.
So, could you describe where you're talking about? Cause it's funny, because I think of myself in West Milton.
The area he's talking about includes like the Kitter Library Building, the abandoned, or the vacant decrepit building, um, at the corner with a food mart and auto body places. Abandoned building there that April works, zoning on. Um, and then, um, also, um-
You could just refer to it as Blue Hill Parkway and sort of keep it-
Yeah, but there's also Brushell Road is what he was thinking from there too. So I don't know exactly the terminology, you know, but it's that section where the park, where those roads all come together.
Yeah, oh, I think that's, I think that's, like, there's a lot of wonderful old buildings over there with so much potential for gentle revitalization without, without scaring the neighborhood, but just a gentle, um, you know, I, I think there's just so much, um, beautiful architecture and, and, and we, we do have some multifamily over there. And, I mean, it's just, uh, walkable in so many ways and, um, in a real community. So, um,
There's some existing non-conforming uses over there too, so kind of,
Yeah.
What, what happens with those properties eventually? That's what the zoning can help there too.
And I, I, I think Allison may have already started looking at some, you know, historic preservation, um, or historic districts.
I have, so, the, um, I'm sorry, the, the Milton Historic Commission is working on, they've got now together a, a panel of people who are looking at the districts. We have, um, WIT Wentworth, who has paired up with that commission to kind of like get, get us into the 21st century and digitize our historic inventory. And I'm looking at mass state tax credits and other forms of incentives to protect some of our, our historic buildings and structures. So, all good things. I think I'm gonna work with the commission on, on like a list of priorities of things now that we have the CPA funding available to us, or we will in the very next weeks. So that's all good stuff. Kathleen, you, your hand is raised. Did you wanna say something?
Yes, I did, because I wanted to also think of some other, um, long-term projects that I think need to be addressed. And one of them is the rules and regulations of the planning board need to be updated seriously to reflect, you know, new conditions, environmental conditions, economic conditions. Um, our rules and regulations are, are ancient. And so that, I don't know whether that's hiring a consultant to do that work or whatever, but I would like to put that on the list as well. I've looked at a brand-new rules and regulations done by a friend of mine who's a town planner in another town, and it's just, they're stunning. And we should really be looking at the fact that our, our rules and regulations, you know, haven't reflected anything with climate change, energy efficiency, or any of that stuff. So I would wanna put that on the list. And then, because we've talked about this a number of times, but our zoning code is an embarrassment. It's not available on the website in any remotely useful way. It was embarrassing to sit on a 40B hearing and hear the applicant's attorney say, "Oh, I didn't know I needed a waiver because I didn't know that was in your zoning code" because it wasn't available on, he didn't get it when he got the copy. So the, the, the situation with our zoning bylaws is just, I mean, even, even the existing one isn't on the website. And that's another thing that also needs to be updated to reflect, you know, newer times and newer conditions. So I think that's, I, I talked, I talked to a friend of mine who does this sort of, you know, recodifications of zoning codes and it runs something like 40 grand, takes about nine months. But, so just to sort of throw that out there as a, a consideration. Thank you.
Well, we already allocated, uh, funds from Planning Board probably three or four years ago. And I'm, we're still waiting for the results of that. I know Tim got some draft version of it and I'm, I'm sure it's on his plate of things to do, but maybe we can ask for an update on that. Just so we know where, what we're getting, Kathleen, to see what, how much further we need to go. But it would be something-
Yeah, Tim's been in constant, constant contact with Sue Galvin over this, the town clerk. So he, he'll be prepared to give you a, an update. I know he's been connecting with her on it for status very recently. I think it was even like two days ago that I heard him talking. So he'll be more than prepared.
Good, thank you. I know they've done a lot of work on that, Sue Galvin, and I think there was even a committee that, um, went through everything and I, so, so I, but you're right, we gotta get that up on the website. It's, um, it's hard every time I have to go look at it. I go up to my attic and I dust off the big binder and, but anyways-
It's horrible.
I know, and that, it's not even that, even the planning board's unofficial copy is four years old. So you have no place to go to get everything. It's, you know, i- i- if you think about, um, how difficult that makes it for, um, people who want to do things in town. And even for people who live there where somebody wants to do something, you can't find it.
Yeah, you don't even know what, if you have to go in for variance, you don't even know what you need a variance for.
The variances are. How do you have conversation? Yeah, it's, well.
Okay, well, I think we're all in agreement on that zoning code getting on the website. So, all right then, um, anything else anybody wanna put on the list? Okay, all right. Well, um, that's all for now, but it sounds like in the spring we're gonna be talking a lot about East Milton and, um, GLAM and Dodson and Flinker this winter. And then in the future, we really wanna continue Allison's work on the historic districts, rules and regulations update, um, discussion, zoning code, so.
One thing I would say, just to think about is, you know, in terms of the timing of the fiscal year and the timing of the special town meeting that's in the fall, that was originally set up to deal with non-budget articles like, uh, zoning. It's like, if they're not aligned, you know, like your budget year is different by however many months. And I think that puts us in this kind of planning bind, like schedule, you know? I think we need to think about that.
Our zoning meeting should be in the winter because we get our money in the summer. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, so we need time to use the money to get prepared. Or we, I don't know, it's something to think about a little bit more, I guess. Maybe Allison adds that to the conversation for you and Tim. But we find ourselves in a bind all the time with this, with the budget, with the timing of the zoning articles, um.
Maybe it should really be that, I don't know how everybody else in the town would feel, but if we had the May meeting, if the planning board had the May meeting, because we get the money and then we'd have nine months to do it.
That's what makes sense, doesn't it? But that's definitely gonna be, but you have to pass a budget at a certain time, right?
Yeah, so I guess it's not gonna work for the rest of the town, but anyway, just, okay.
It might be something where if we planned out the zoning a little bit differently, like when we, you could really educate town meeting members ahead of time, like, you know, the webinar we did or some materials so that it doesn't take quite as long in town meeting to go through zoning. Then we could get it done in, in May, maybe. Or we said we're gonna target one or two articles. It just, we need to kind of plan it out, I think, a little bit with these, with these deadlines and timelines in mind and restrictions now.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, um, this is excellent. I think, uh, we've got a lot of work cut out for us. So I will be working with, um, Allison and Tim to try to map this out. After we get through this big wave of work in the next couple of weeks. So, uh, any last thoughts, anyone? Did anyone from the public have any? Go ahead.
Just a question, I guess, we don't, if, I'm not sure if there is or isn't, but, um, I don't, I'm not trying to start a big discussion, but is there anything, I guess, Allison, that you know of that's coming around, just around the bend? Any new project that, you know, as we're thinking about early 2022 dates? Obviously, like, like what was just mentioned, every, our, our schedule gets packed very fast, so I guess as we're planning out the beginning of the year, is there already anything that we know that's coming around as new projects?
So, yes and, and no, I guess is a, the, we do know that there's gonna be some activity, um, down, down in Milton Village.
Yeah.
We have had some preliminary, uh, conversations about that, those proposals. Tim and I are actually trying to map out a, a better way, of, of helping support the, the board and the residents as we kinda navigate these projects. I think what we, we wanna do is just kinda, you know, have like, almost like a internal scoping session first so that we understand, what the needs of the, the project are gonna be and kinda just create a timeline. And I'll, I'll wait for Tim to give you some more feedback on that because it's ultimately his decision. But I think as a, as a staff, we're gonna be a little bit more hands-on in facilitating these processes.
Sounds great, yeah, no, and that's probably what I, you, you read about some of the things in the paper or online and you kinda foresee some things coming around, which is, you know, which is cool. It's, it's good.
It's, it, it is, Rich. I, I think it's, you know, I think it's exciting that, that people want to put nice things in, in Milton. That's what the intention of having the Milton Village Plan Unit Development Overlay Zoning go in. So it's, it's doing the job it was intended to do. Um, so, so that's nice. So when we get more information, we will certainly share it with everybody.
Awesome, thank you.
And before I forget for our list, um, early in the new year, the, um, there was some issue with the Milton Village zoning about the fourth-story fund. And I, I really wanna get on that. It keeps, um, it keeps slipping. And I just wanna get right on that, if, if, um, if you don't mind just putting that on the list for, I, I'd love to get Cheryl and I on a phone call with, uh, Kevin Freitag. And, because we, I, I, I'm guessing Cheryl, we probably wanna get something at least on the May, yeah.
Yeah, I would think so, because the ones we start reviewing a project, you know, we wanna make sure if dollars are coming in, that we have, um, you know, mechanism for them, you know? To be received. I mean, right now, I under, yeah, I understood that it's not that we can't accept the funds, it's, they can't be in the, um, I'm forgetting the name of it now, but they're targeted funds, you know, that, uh, that you can't use for anything else. I'm forgetting the term, sorry. But any case, um, yeah, I think, um, we were waiting to hear back from Town Council, right, from Kevin Freitag? So I do think that, I agree with you, it would be good to get that in May if you could so that it's in place before we get these applications or before we make decisions on the application.
We still hadn't gotten an answer from Kevin about redoing that.
I haven't, I don't, I haven't seen anything.
No, we haven't yet. Um, so, okay, all right, well, um,
I'm glad you mentioned that, Denny.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad I just thought of it. Um, as Rich was saying, what do we have in the new year and I?
I'm feeling a motion to, uh, adjourn coming.
Please, bring it on.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All in favor, Cheryl Taggays.
Uh, I, yes.
Kathleen Nodden.
Yes.
Rich Beeler.
Yes.
It's not even eight thirty.
I know, right? This is great. Thank you, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Have a great weekend, everybody. Bye. Good night, good night, Allison, good night, Julia.
Good night, Jenny.